Call meeting in order.
To the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jen, could you call them?
Mr. Eastack?
Here.
Mr. Rowley?
Here.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Here. Do I have a motion for the approval of the last month's meeting?
Motion.
Any second?
Sure.
Questions or good discussion? Hold that discussion. Jen, roll call please.
Really?
Here. Present, yes.
Mr. Eastack? Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes. Jen, it's your report now.
Treasurer's report has bills accounts payable as well as financial reports, which include the court reports. We had three donations, excuse me, that we are going to accept. Four wheels from, for the bus, four, from Mr. Eastack. Talk to me. Two hundred fifty dollars from Mrs. Holloway for the John Woods Scholarship. Five hundred dollars from Drew and Rose Barquette for the scoreboard. Also, have a couple financial items. We need to transfer the balance of the 2013 fund to yearbook. And we're going to approve middle school literature, freshman class, sophomore class, and softball supplemental budgets, as well as return of advances to the general fund from the grades nine, twelve, fund, Spanish club, and hall of fame fund.
Motion to accept?
Motion.
Second?
I can't second it.
Well, I'm just looking at you, I was asking. Second. Here's an odd question, but don't we have an ability to give you some discretion under a certain dollar amount? And when we're putting motions for twenty-three cents and three dollars and forty-eight cents?
The unfortunate part is I have to have every transfer and advance approved by the board.
It just seems some nominal amount should be...
I know, I know.
Round me in on that.
Yes, unfortunately, it's required by the auditors.
Any other questions better than mine? All right, roll please.
Mr. Eastack?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes. I didn't check with any public participation. Hey Doug, is there anyone on the assignment sheet reading here?
Besides you?
You're Kim.
Yeah.
I have Kim's season my report.
Yeah.
So, anyone that didn't sign that would like to raise an issue or anything?
Well, how would you all come for it?
All business. Not, any student achievement?
Yes, thank you. Honor roll achievements, I want to, the honor roll students, and I'm going to talk about a little bit of that in my super tennis report. But the third and fourth grader treated to a luncheon that included a slushy treat and popcorn from the cafeteria. I want to thank Mr. Ridgeway for putting that together. They got a certificate and Dairy Queen, once again, can't say this enough, they donated again, what was it, ninety-six certificates for honor rolls in middle and high school, and thirty-six for third and fourth grade for sundaes and deli bars. And I want to thank them for that. Mr. Ridgeway's been doing student of the month. In September, there were eighteen students, and October twenty-four students. They were treated to eating lunch in the library with Mr. Ridgeway. They had ice cream sundaes provided by the PTO. And we want to thank the PTO for that. And we want to thank the Dairy Queen also, they explained our students of the month in the Dairy Queen, which was very nice on the poster, as you go to Dairy Queen. We had a terrific Veterans Day assembly. Over a hundred fifty guests joined, the students and staff paying tribute to the veterans during a school-wide assembly on November eleventh. There was a breakfast, and thank you vet, nothing but compliments on the breakfast and the, and the, and the assembly. Many veterans and their guests attended. And there was performances by the band, the choir, kindergarten classes, and several student presenters. And I had some people that said they'd been all over the area, and they came back again this year for ours. It just was very, very exciting and very well done. Thank the students, the staff, and put that together. National Honor Society was also last week, and we're going to congratulate those students as well. So, it's all for student achievement.
Great, pass. New business.
New business. Personnel, A, correction from the October meeting on the, on the bus routes for Jim Luxel. The following workers for winter sports approve Alan Mesmer and Todd Rose as volunteer junior high girls' basketball coaches for the basketball team, girls' team. And a correction to Sandy Mitchell's one-year limited contract to a two-year limited contract beginning September first, 2013.
Did you just all that right now?
I just could do A, B, yeah, I'll do A just now.
Motion for, I think both for five and A? Motion. Second.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Just, I'm sorry, I'm going to ask questions first, I apologize.
No, go ahead, your comments might stir some questions.
I just, for Sandy Mitchell, she, because it was her third, by contract, it would be a two-year contract, and we just did not do that back in April. Just clarifying what that is.
Any other? Jen?
Mr. Eastack?
Yes.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
I'm going to do B, C, and D together. Supplemental contracts, assistant grocery track coach with Dave Adams, Diane Richardson for the second year as junior high track coach. And we have a substitute driver, Karen Hippely, substitute cook. We have substitute teachers, which is very hard to find drivers and teachers. We also have Leslie Wilson, the van driver for the Ranger of the Year. The art club, Sandy Mitchell takes students to Philadelphia and Gettysburg for the art trip this year. So, for B, C, and D.
Motion, please.
Motion.
Okay. Any questions? How many students would take it to another trip?
Well, last year, I want to say it was about twenty-five or thirty.
Do we have a pair up with another school, or is it...
Not to my knowledge, no.
You know, if it'd be more cost-effective to Philadelphia?
And last year, we had some issues with district baseball, about thirty students, would you say, John?
About what?
That went to the art trip last year. I know, I just ask you, because I know baseball, we went through some things and the scheduling.
Thirty or less.
Yeah, thirty or less, yeah.
They go Gettysburg one day, Philadelphia the next?
Yeah, she said an itinerary, I haven't received that yet, but yeah.
How many do you say were going this year?
I would say, they haven't signed up yet, but I'm going to guess thirty, that's going to be my estimate. In art club? Oh, there is the itinerary.
It's in your bucket.
Yeah, it's in the bucket, yeah.
It's towards the end of the faculty.
Any more questions? Roll please.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
Mr. Eastack?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Okay, I'll do E, F, and E and F together. Use of facilities of Blaser for the, the use of facilities that we already have for the soccer banquet. Approve the board policy fifteen-thirty from, from last month. That was on principal evaluation systems. And BNS terrain contracting for snow review for the 2013-14 school year.
Motion, please.
Motion.
Second. Anything, questions, comments? None?
The only comment I have is that when it snows out, we need to make sure that we get salt down on the sidewalk. Is that where we don't have any issues with kids? Even if we're, even if we haven't approved the contract, somebody needs to take care of it.
Right, and he, we had talked before, there's hardly approved, we had a plan...
Maybe we need to do it earlier in the year. Huh? Maybe we need to do it earlier in the year.
I've gotten pretty detailed about this too, because you're on now with the effect of too much salt, too little salt. Too much salt, you have deterioration in parking lot, we saw where that already got us with the problems we have in the parking lot over the last eight years. Too little salt, you get slipping falls. How's the parking lot, like, versus the sidewalks? And is that Russ's call, or is that going to be your call? Make the call, and to go over the details, I got up about four-thirty that morning. The, Russ and I get up, we both drive, we talk to Danny Valentine, we talk, because he's out on the roads too. We talked to several people. At that point, we sold the drives in some of the traveled areas. We did have BNS on, on call. I will also say that we, to go back to the, the contract, we, we solicited three to five bids. And we waited and waited for other bids, but we definitely, we sat up on call from last year. The, one thing about this, you know, not make excuses, one thing was though, it really got cold between six and eight.
Yeah.
So, we checked into roads early, it got worse, as you know, we had to go back and salt again. And with the limited equipment that we have on site, to call somebody in, the cars are blocked. So, it got the best of us this time, like I said, it was very, it is a very detailed plan.
It's a difficult call, I know what the business is.
It is, it's hard. It is. Four-thirty in the morning, it was slush, and by eight o'clock, it was ice skating.
It was frozen. And like I say...
And we only pay per, per hit, right? I mean, and so, I mean, it's appetations for the district if we make the right call. And it's hard, it's a hard call to make, especially, like Richard said, between that four and six o'clock, which I think sometimes is the coldest hours of the day.
A lot of time Bobby gets up here like three, like, we say, you know, if you know, if you're up two, you know. I know Bobby gets up.
Does he come up and take a look around three?
He gets up early, because usually when I'm, even when I drive up at three, he's here.
He's already here.
Mostly.
Need to make sure about the sidewalks around the tournament, or the school also.
Yeah, that was the, one of the areas too, the sidewalks, especially letting off down below was...
Will we first turn his route? For this business?
We're the only one right now. He said he gave up all the other ones to be, just to have the school.
All right.
Well, he's an alum too, which always...
Grass.
Jen, roll please.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Eastack?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
As he was saying, I hope push a car out. That morning.
That's the supplemental contract.
That's a serious...
Stipend.
The... Like we used to say in the movies, a cast of thousands today. It's hard to believe we're in the middle of the second grading period for the 2013-14 school year. If you walk around the school, it's amazing, you can hear the Christmas, the band playing Christmas concerts during Mr. Ridgeway's lunch hour, great time of the year. Basketball getting ready to start, picture night tonight for the middle school. So, it's, it's a great time of the year, but it's hard to believe it's here this quick. Congratulations to the students of all A, merit, and honor roll for the first grading period. Forty-six percent of the high school students got one of these honor rolls, seventy-five percent of the middle school students, and sixty percent of the third and fourth graders. We continue to work with the state support team and the ESC to implement, mark the race to the top initiatives, as well as components of the district improvement plan. On December second, we have an in-service, we'll focus on curriculum maps. Principals continue to evaluate staff using O tests, and I'm evaluating the principal using the O test system. The lead mentors and facilitators and resident educators are meeting monthly to fill those requirements by the state. And we have TB, building level teams, teacher-based teams, and district leadership teams meeting, some weekly, some monthly, some bi-monthly, so that's going well. The alumni association is in the process of setting up an office on the K-12 campus. Actually, I just took Dan in there today, it's exciting to see. You know, we've talked about community and building community and connections between the community and, and, and the school and alumni. So, been talking about it for several years, about the alumni coming in, and we have, since Cheryl is now the secretary, as well as EMIS coordinator, they, that area was open, and there, Mrs. Roderick was in there this week, moving some stuff in, and very interesting the pictures, and, and, so it's going to be, I think it's going to be a big plus to, to do that. Also, I'd like to, you know, get our students connected with the alumni association before they leave, so they know how important it is afterwards.
Can I point something out? I absolutely love this. I, I think like, you know, when we were talking about the new Letonia and the deep roots, and I think that, that's, that statement says a lot. I think the board, you know, in the last several years, we made the decision of moving to preschool. And so, we're getting, you know, the young moms at an early age that, you know, start thinking Letonia, start thinking bear. But even more than that, and Mrs. Votl knows exactly what I'm saying here, when you leave, you know, let's get that email, let's keep you, you know, part of our community, so, you know, the bear life goes on. My son says, from, from, from cradle to grave, always a bear, you know what I mean? Always a bear. And I think that's so important, even before, you know, in the preschool, you're a bear, and then afterwards, I don't care if you're living in Los Angeles, or, you know, Berlin, or Letonia, you're still a bear.
Yeah, and like I said, it's good.
That's you, you're always going there.
We had some good information over the last week or so. Earlier this week, we found out that we applied for two straight A grants, and the district has, both the grants we submitted met the financial sustainability criteria, and moved on to step two. Three hundred fifty-nine out of five, six hundred sixty-nine applicants statewide have reached that step. I put a little summary, the Columbia County grant was with nine high schools, and it's a STEM grant, and it will be involved with partnership with Youngstown State, STEM College, and the Mahoning Valley Manufacturers Coalition. It'll also work with Salem Community Hospital, have a biomedical program. So, we're excited about that. Our grant that we apply for on our own is a online learning initiative, and it seeks funding to increase teacher capacity, access to upper-level AP classes for high school students, and online presence in grade six through twelve through a one-to-one initiative to, for all the students to, the grant would pay for all the students six through twelve to have a wireless device, whether it's an iPad or Chromebook, or whatever we decide to do. And obviously, there's some professional development for our staff to be able to use that, utilize that in the most efficient way. So, happy that both grants moved to the second, to the second step. The second, the one we did on our own, I know, was about a five hundred and sixty thousand dollar grant. We received information this week, this past week too, that the three safety grants we applied for last month were approved by ODE. These grants will be used to have radios that are compatible with the Letonia Police Department in each building. We're talking about that, we continue, we said that last year, that our safety plan is fluid, we're always adding things. This is just another step in that. Over the summer, I may have mentioned this, that we added nine additional cameras, excuse me, to bring our total to forty-five cameras on the K-12 campus. We have interior keyless entry doors that have been added inside. One of our concerns, we talked about, was during this, this mistletoe at the high school, those doors are open. So, we wanted to be able to shut off the elementary section, so people roaming in, we have somebody at the front door, with people roaming in, just be prepared. So, we're able to do that on both sides of the building to isolate those areas. We also have been working with Dan Valentine, John Saldano, Brad Davis from Salem. January seventeenth, I think we talked a little bit last week, month, and month before, we got a waiver day, we talked about that, January seventeenth. And that's going to be for Alice training. We're going to bring in Brad Davis, who's a certified Alice trainer from the Salem Police Department. And he's going to come in here and train the staff on, on Alice. We have a whole day set aside as a waiver day to talk about school safety. So, on that subject, tonight, from our formerly Letonia school board member and current representative for Letonia for the Columbia County Career Technical Center, Doug Jones is here. He recently attended the Capitol Conference in Columbus, and they discussed Alice training, as well as social media. So, I asked Doug to come tonight and speak to the board, so.
Thanks. Doug, Jones, please. I'll be brief. I was pleased to hear that you already have Alice training set up. Have any of you gone to the Capitol Conference since you've been on the board? It's Tom has. I thought this year was better than other years that I've gone, but there's all different types, types of classes throughout the day, with different people presenting them. And almost always, since I've been there, the classes are anywhere from an hour, an hour and fifteen minutes, hour and a half long. You see people get up after twenty minutes, thirty minutes, and just leave, because they've either heard enough, or they're not interested in what the speaker's saying. When I saw this Alice training here, I went for the Columbia County Career Center, but there's only so many classes you can attend down there for that, so I brought back some things that I thought would be interested in Letonia, without knowing you guys were already doing Alice. But not a single person left. This was so interesting, and it was presented by the superintendent and the principal of the Oregon School District, which is up in Toledo. They're fortunate enough, they have two resource officers, they've had them for eight years, they haven't had to pay a penalty to have them. So, they do have resource officers in the school. But when the resource officers were speaking, this is their book, this is their book that they give to the staff. I brought this to you, and then when I found out from Rob, you're already doing this, this might give you a little bit of a head start or some ideas, so I grabbed some of these. But in almost every single instance of school killings, the, the children have done exactly what they're trained to do. You know, away from the door, over in the corner, you know, and, and they're just sitting ducks. And one thing of interest that they said, several years back, there were thirty-two students killed at Virginia Tech, a college. And when you go into college, they don't have this, like, when you, you're in your grade school, and they're telling you if somebody would come in. And they said, what was interesting about that, the college, those students that were killed, they did the exact same thing they were trained to do all throughout their, their school years. You know, that's because that's what they're trained to be, that's the safe thing. This, this puts a really different light on it. And I won't, I won't go into much more of this, just one interesting thing the police officer said. You're supposed to distract the shooter, you're supposed to do anything without being a hero, you know, if you just throw something, if Rich threw something at me and I got a duck, well, I'm not going to be shooting. But the interesting thing was, the officer said, you know, they're trained to shoot, and just at a, a target that's not moving, they're like eighty percent accurate. So, they're trained, and somebody else comes in the school with a gun, chances are, they're not trained like a police officer. And so, the idea is, if you're moving and trying to make things a little more difficult, they're finding it really would increase the children's chances to survive. When, I've only been gone a few months, and again, I'd like to commend the board and the administration, the keyless entry doors out here, Rob was showing me tonight, and for this to work, those keyless entry doors are outstanding, because the whole idea is, if somebody would come in the north end of the building, okay, the normal protocol would be, you know, lock down your rooms, and everybody stays in your rooms. Well, the idea is, why would you keep everybody down this end of the building in their rooms waiting for somebody to come if they came in down there, and now you have this, these keyless entry doors? So, I think you're really going to like this. The superintendent at the Oregon Schools said, if anybody wants to contact them for any other information, they're welcome to, but this is their staff book, and it's entitled Surviving the Act of Shooter, and it's really good.
Four hours. Yeah? But they do the afternoon, I'm sorry. Gas, but the training...
No, you're fine.
Be four-hour training with Brad, and then we have an afternoon session too, on some other safety protocols.
So, I'd be anxious to know what you think of it, but I thought it was outstanding. Like I said, not a single person left, and this was an hour and a half long. It was really good stuff. The second thing that I brought back, and it, it was divided into two parts, it, it was all about social media and the law, and not just what you can and can't do, I'm going to go over that, because there's some new board numbers coming on, and I thought it might be an interesting topic if they didn't know. But it's also, when you used to get a school threat, how, how would you normally have gotten one, Rob? In the past?
In the past, phone or...
Phone.
Phone.
Well, now, you can get one on Facebook, you can get one. Somebody tweets something to Kurt, Kurt's, Kurt's son, so there's all different kinds of ways. But they'll, they'll go over that in the Alice training. But what I wanted to bring back, district use versus personal use of social media, two things. Your personal page may be considered a public record, depending on the content, meaning what is the content of your post? Is the post or discussion related to the district or your job? And to use privacy settings, and the reason they brought that up, your personal page can be considered a public record, even though it's your personal page, if you're discussing school business on it. The, the other part of that, Ohio's Open Meeting Law, the Sunshine Law, it says, if, any type of social media, if you're Facebooking, emailing, Twitter, whatever, it says, if a majority of the board members, or the majority of the board members responding to posts, a succession of posts between several board members may violate Ohio's Open Meeting Law. Because everything that you decide or discuss has to be done here in public. So, if Rob sends out on Friday that they had a great week in school, and this, and all, all four of you guys said, that's great, I mean, that's nothing. But if something comes up that a decision is ultimately going to be made on, and you're emailing back and forth, or you're Facebooking back and forth, it's a, it's a violation of the Sunshine Law. So, I brought that back just for that. And lastly, you have already voted me into the Career Center for three years. Rob will tell you more about that, it's House Bill fifty-nine, but they had a class on House Bill fifty-nine, and they're still trying to understand it also, and it will probably continue to change. But what they said was, every member that has already been voted to be on the, the Career Center boards is not good, it has to be redone again in January, in order, for the new law that they have just changed once again. So, if you would be kind enough, it has to be on the agenda in January again.
I'm sorry, Doug, we're not doing a district like that.
No, because they weren't told that until, until recently. The last two things that I wanted to bring up, when you can, when you think about the Career and Technical Center, at least when I thought about it, you still think about students, just like here, correct? But in today's day and age, with a lot of adults not having jobs, or losing their jobs, or their companies closed down, or whatever the reason is, the adult education classes that are being offered down at the Career Center right now are outstanding, they, they've had such an influx this year, and it started last year, with adults, that we've been putting on more staff down there. Just an example, some things they could learn, and these are just some of the new things. You can go get a CDL license, they've partnered with a company, can't put semis down at, down at the Career Center, but they can teach everything at the Career Center, the company brings their semis down, and then they, they drive. So, you can get CDL license down there now. You can become a nurse down there, and the big thing, because of all the gas and energy stuff going on, is welding. You know, there's, everybody needs welders, businesses need welders, the gas people need welders, and they're doing all kinds of stuff like that down there too. And since the House Bill fifty-nine is something new, and I, and I am Letonia's representative, I'm asking all of you, if you would just discuss at some point in time, and ask, I want to know what you expect of me. Do you want me to come back and report at meetings? Do you want me to come back quarterly? Do you want me to send something in to Rob that he can include in his superintendent's report? You don't want to see me at all, that's fine too. But I, but I thought I should ask, because, you know, before I could, I'd be here, and you could say, I am the Letonia representative, and if you'd ever see me, you know, that, that just doesn't seem right to me, so. But whatever your pleasure is, just tell Rob, he'll let me know, and I'll make sure it's done. Okay? Thank you.
Can I ask Doug a question? Doug, on the, on the social media, was there any, did they do any discussing on if a person requested to see the emails of, of the board members for the last two months? Is that public record? Does that have to be? I mean, what are schools doing in that case?
My, my understanding is, Larry, and the reason I'm saying this, it's attorneys for the Ohio schools that are putting this on for that part. And again, this social media was also for threats, you know, school threats, just different ways. But the, the email is, is public record, and if anybody requests the email, they can get the email. And I guess one of the misnomers is, I have my computer home, and I send you an email that has something to do with the school, and I think that nobody can see that, because it's mine. But if it has to do with the school, and somebody would file complaint, then they can get those emails.
Your computer is open to the public?
Yes.
Your personal computer?
Yes, if, only, only if you're discussing school business. Yes. Thank you.
Okay, also, tonight here, we're happy to have Kim Sekola. Kim is a Spanish teacher, and she recently, she's done a lot of great things with the Spanish club, and I get so excited to see all the opportunities that our staff offers our students, it's just great. I keep saying that, so many opportunities that we, that our teachers give our students. She, actually this year, and I should probably talk about this a little bit, we have Spanish and eighth-grade students taking Spanish, which is new this year, and doing very well. And she also took a trip to Spain with a group of students and parents last year, and she's going to do it again. And I wanted her, I asked her to come a couple months ago, I said, "Can you come to a future board meeting and talk a little bit about your trip?" Because it was exciting to see that experience, so, Kim?
Thank you.
Want the white side?
Um, please, one or both. I don't want to make it completely pitch black in here. But before I start talking about the Spain trip, can everyone see that?
Do you?
Before I start talking about the Spain trip, my eighth-grade students, whom I have, are amazing, they are excited, they are enthusiastic about learning Spanish. So it's really nice to have a new group of students in there, and to see them enjoy that new opportunity that's opened up to them. Last year, I took these group of students and one parent, and actually, there was a YSU student who came with us, she wanted to use this trip as a pre-study abroad experience to see how she would fare. And we went to Spain from June 16th through the 22nd, and we were based out of Madrid. So I just put together some pictures to go along with our itinerary, and some reasons why we travel, why I think it's important, and what the students gain from this. Because ultimately, that's what this is about, the students growing from these experiences. So the first thing, why even travel abroad? Of course, it's all about the cultural experiences, learning something new, learning that there are other ways of living than what you are used to. And what I loved about this tour company is that they offered educational experiences. I feel like, since I talk about things that happen in other parts of the world in my classroom, the kids don't think that it really exists. And for me to take them to places that we've actually talked about and studied, and to see them make the connection, it was really great to see that. Also, they can discover who they really are as a person, and really become independent. You know, they can realize, I don't need to have all of my friends with me to enjoy something. I didn't know that I could speak a foreign language to order lunch, and receive my change back in foreign currency, and be okay. I can take the subway system and end up where I'm supposed to be. It was really nice to see them grow in that aspect as well. And it also helps them to discover what they want to do with their future plans. And I was talking to the students today, and I had them answer a few questions for me, the ones who traveled with me. And one girl, Taylor Howell, said, "I really like seeing other cultures, and my senior year, I want to go to Spain." That was one of the best moments for me on the trip. Her and I were walking down the street in Madrid during free time, and she said, "You know, senora, I really think that I want to come back here." And I said, "Oh yeah, do you want to work here, you want to study abroad in college?" She goes, "I think I want to be a foreign exchange student my senior year of high school." And that just really, you know, it made me feel proud, that she felt confident enough that she could do that, and that she really was enjoying herself to go back. And that picture down at the bottom, we traveled in a large group of about fifty of us, there were two groups from Maryland, and there was also another group from Texas. We started off in Madrid, this is the Port de del Sol, this is one of the main parts of the city, and they call it the Port de del Sol, the Port of the Sun, because all of the streets go off, so it makes it kind of look like the rays of the sun. And actually, that point right there is the origin of all the highways in Madrid. So they all start from that one point in the center of that plaza, and they go outwards. Also, we went to the Plaza Mayor. Every city in Spain has a main plaza where they have cafes and restaurants, important government buildings. It's really just a social gathering hub, you'll see a lot of young kids playing soccer in the middle of these plazas, you'll see young, young friends going out and getting ice cream, you'll see older couples strolling along and sitting at a cafe. And the kids really got to see, there were a lot of street performers in here as well, people blowing giant bubbles, so that was kind of a new experience, because around here, we don't have that, people asking for money to take their picture, because they're dressed up like Superman. You know, so that was interesting, telling them, "No, you cannot give them money, or you should not give them money." La Palacio Real, this is the Royal Palace in Spain, except the royals do not live here anymore. They do hold formal banquets here when, I forget which Olympics that it was, but I believe the Spanish basketball team won. They held a gala there to congratulate them upon their return. You cannot take any pictures inside the royal palace, but we got to take a tour in there, we got to see the dining room, all the smaller living quarters from all the previous kings and queens, because Spain is a monarchy. And they really got to experience what life is like as a royal. That, I love that view, I think it's, what I love about Spain is the countryside is always gorgeous, the sky is always blue. That was actually the king's hunting grounds, a very, very long time ago, before they modernized it, and you can actually see an amusement park off in the distance. The Prado, the famous art museum, again, you cannot take pictures inside, because they are afraid it will hurt the quality of the art. But one of the famous paintings that we got to see is Las Meninas, which is a painting by Diego Velázquez, it deals a lot with the focus in the picture, and the depth perception within it. We had a really great tour guide within the Prado, she explained what characteristics certain painters are known for around Spain. So they got a little bit of art history along with our trip. We also took flamenco lessons. The kids got to learn or experience what it's like to dance. It took them a while to warm up to the idea that they might have to dance with somebody they don't know from another group. But, you know, they really got to loosen up, and I saw them kind of, they made, they had fun with themselves, you know? They weren't afraid to make mistakes or mess up. So this is the place where we did it, Las Cabernetas. All the pictures I had inside there were very blurry, because everyone was moving. So I have to put a picture of the sign. Toledo, this city, I believe the students were very impressed with. They told me this is what they envisioned Spain to look like. It's a very old city, very small, narrow streets, cobblestones. And this city is famous for making swords, all the way back to the Three Musketeers era. So I bought a small sword to bring home for my husband, I believe a few of them brought one home, we wrapped it up real nice in bubble wrap before we left for the airport. But they had a really nice time in this city. Within the city, we went and visited the Cathedral of Toledo, and I just wanted to show a picture of the altar. The students are usually blown away when you see these altars, because we don't have altars like this in the United States, that are covered in gold filigree with all the pictures, with stories from the Bible within it. And just the size alone of the cathedral walking in, it's very beautiful, it's a very, it's an awe-inspiring experience to walk into a church like that. Salamanca, this city is, it's dear to my heart, because this is where I studied abroad when I was in college. So I was very happy and proud and excited to take my students back to the city. And actually, we got to go visit my housemother in her apartment. A girl leading one of the other trips was my roommate in Spain, so we kind of coordinated our groups to go together, and that we would go to the city, and that we would go see our housemother. And the kids actually got to go up to her apartment with us and see, you know, that the kitchen is not nearly as big as what they're used to, and there's no dishwasher, in fact, there's a washing machine where the dishwasher is. And they loved it. Salamanca is known for being one of the most beautiful cities around Spain. This is their Plaza Mayor, it's one of the biggest in Spain. This is their cathedral.